That's really loud, sorry. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting in a second. Bienvenidos and welcome. I call to order the work session of the Beaverton School Board on June 2nd, 2025 at 5:46 PM. I will note that all seven board members are here, present in person. Sorry. Our topic this evening is one that's very dear to my heart, and that centers students and the supports we can provide when some of them need a little extra support or a longer runway to thrive. Tonight, we'll be spending our work session focused on graduation supports, including alternative pathways, credit recovery, push-out prevention and recovery. It's one of the, it's one that is crucial to ensuring that each and every student in BSD can thrive. We have a team from the Teaching and Learning Department presenting to us tonight. Todd Kersetti, will you introduce the team and share the presentation?
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Perez, Superintendent Balderas and Beaverton School Board members. We're here with an esteemed group of educators that represents a lot of different aspects of the Beaverton School District. We're excited to talk about our credit recovery, our alternative education pathways, dropout retention and ways that we keep students on track to graduate. And it couldn't be a more appropriate day considering that today is the last day of classes for our seniors. Tomorrow is their last day in the building. And then we have graduations, as many of you know, starting tomorrow night. So it's a busy week, celebrating the class of 2025, and many of them have taken circuitous routes to get there. So we're here with the team, representing to my right, my partner Jill O'Neil, Executive Administrator for Teaching and Learning and Option Schools, Gretchen Mollers, the Teacher on Special Assignment for Outreach and Engagement, our re-engagement specialist. We have Principal Andrew Curl from Beaverton High School, representing the comprehensive high school credit recovery pathways. Christina Schultz was going to be here, but she's very, very ill, so she sends her apologies. But she is the Assistant Administrator for the Flex Credit Program. However, Paul Autumn, who is the Principal of the Flex Online School, will both represent Flex Credit as well as Flex Online. And then lastly, Dr. Jonathan Sanchez, who is the Principal at Merlot Station High School. So as always, we, it is important for us to look at... Yeah, it is.
If you break it, you buy it.
That's okay. I can speak about the equity lens, which is vitally important in particular in every decision we make. But when we talk about alternative pathways for our students, in particular, the idea of expanding opportunities. That is what our Alternative Ed Pathways and Credit Recovery Programs provide. With that, defining, there you go, yep, one more. Defining alternative education, in the past, the narrow definition was really the idea that Alternative Ed was served offsite, that programs were for students of the, that were most at risk. However, more modern definition and our broad definition is that Alternative Ed really encompasses programs and systems that expand on what our comprehensive K-12 system can provide. In particular, it's messy. It's not a clean system when you're talking about Alternative Ed or credit recovery because it is important that we take into account student agency and interest, that there are positive student and educator relationships, that the programs that we provide are individualized by nature so that students want to be engaged and stay engaged, that there is support and PD for staff in order for them to stay up to speed on how to support our students best. And most importantly, why it makes it somewhat messy is flexibility in the system. Okay, thank you.
So when we think about pathways to graduation and flexibility, our students benefit from many options within our district. As we use the multi-tiered Systems of Support lens, or MTSS, we can think about the differentiated environments for our students. And the aim is for students to have many options to choose from so that they can choose the one that is the best fit to meet their needs. And as we know, those needs might change over the span of their high school career. So most of our students attend a comprehensive high school. Many of them choose to attend an option school that matches their interests, their goals. Some choose to attend Flex Online. Some students who attend any of those options, Flex Online, the option schools or a comprehensive high school, also participate in the Flex Credit Program. And then a smaller number of students attend programs on the Merlot Station campus, including Community School, Passages, the Continuing Education for Young Parents, Interim Home Instruction, CTE Construction and Project Reset. Regardless of the school a high school student attends, there are some universal strategies we use to keep all students engaged in the community, in the community that supports them. That includes high-interest classes, social-emotional learning, extracurricular sports and activities, affinity groups and CTE option schools.
And in addition to the other supports mentioned, we are refining our comprehensive system of tracking and re-engaging students who have been dropped for non-attendance. We have our Passages Reengagement Program to support and retain our students who have been out of school.
We also offer credit recovery in many different manners. All high school students have access to in-building credit recovery. Tonight, we will be highlighting Beaverton High's program. But also, summer school and Flex Credit are available as a pathway for students for credit recovery. Some of our students demonstrate their proficiency in world languages through the stamp or ALTA tests, while some others demonstrate reading, writing and math proficiency through the Work Keys Test, which also can be used as a credential in their job applications for career after school. And a few of our students earn credit through the GED exams or the Passages Connect.
So to humanize the data and systems we're presenting, we want to share a student's story. You can see her demographic information at the top of the slide. This student started ninth grade at her comprehensive neighborhood high school. She got a little behind in credits, so attended summer school. At the start of 10th grade, Flex Credit Recovery classes were added to her schedule. She finished the year on expulsion at Project Reset on the Merlot Station campus. Seeking a fresh start and an opportunity to recover more credits, she enrolled in Oregon Youth Challenge Program, OYCP, the state's alternative high school run by the National Guard in Bend, Oregon. At the end of the first semester of 11th grade, she completed OYCP and made a smooth transition back to BSD through the Passages OYCP Transition Program on the Merlot Station campus. She passed all her classes at her comprehensive high school second semester, did summer school again by the end of the junior year. Of her junior year, she was back on track to graduate. You can see how this student used alternative options that overlap and interweave. This can look messy on paper, like Todd said, but is absolutely responsive to student needs.
At the comprehensive high school, kids also take a meandering path. And at Beaverton High School, we've spent a lot of time reimagining what credit recovery and alternative education can look like. Our credit recovery program is called BARC, the Beaverton Academic Reengagement Center. And we did some really intentional things to switch how we do that at Beaverton. The first is how we staff it. We have a full-time counselor, it's a triple-S position, that's attached to BARC to help with options planning as well as social-emotional support. There's a full-time credit recovery teacher, and that's a switch because credit recovery used to be taught by a teacher maybe having part of their schedule, just a regular teaching assignment, and then an additional credit recovery assignment. We wanted to have one teacher who was fully invested in credit recovery. So that's been a big change to help wrap around students. We also have a grad mentor, which is a para that supports us in that space. And we also have what's called learning target monitors. And learning target monitors are represented by each department. Their primary role is to support students in BARC, to create content and to grade it, and degrade the content using standards-based alignment. The first option is Success Seminar. And Success Seminar is a traditional, a credit recovery class. It's built into a student's traditional schedule and provides academic support as well as executive functioning. And so the teachers are really teaching kids organizational skills as well in that space. And they also track progress. In our, in our Success Seminar class, we had 162 classes recorded. And that's about 50 to 60 credits were earned through that specific model. The second part of the program is called BARC, which is, which is the BARC Partial Day Program. And so this is a more intensive support program to re-engage a smaller number of students. So the BARC program helps onboard, to plan and do wraparound supports for specific kids who need that. And they specifically support students who might be in a fifth or sixth year of their high school plan or students who are returning from extended leave or some are on the verge of dropping out, might be re-engaged through a half-day program. We also have what's called a BARC Pass. And so students who may have a harder time staying in a 95-minute class period for whatever reason as they're working on their academic needs can use that pass to access the space if that's what that team decides will work for that student. This year, we had 11 graduates from BARC that recovered. Two of those students were fifth-year students, one was a six-year student. And we had four students who had returned from OYCP who became a part of that program, were able to stay at Beaverton, which was their desired choice. Last but not least, we have Beaver Lodge, re-engagement hub. And this is, creates flexible structured support for students to get that extra support from those adults. They are able to access GED, Work Keys, the Stamp and Prograd, which all way for kids to recover credit. We also had a special, second semester, ninth grade students were able to recover credit from first semester this year as we worked toward our ninth grade success work, and that was very successful as well. This year, in Beaver Lodge, we had 157 students receive stamp credit and 37 credits through Work Keys. So all of those things exist in a special place that we've created in our school. So it's not only the adults, we've actually created a hub itself for kids to feel welcome and belonging in their space.
All right, you've heard the term flexibility a lot tonight, hence the name Flex in the next two programs we're gonna talk about. One of the challenges of large systems is that they're built to serve the majority. Yet we know that gaps in access, opportunity and expectation persist. Flex Credit exists to close those gaps. Funded through Measure 98 High School Success, Flex Credit supports students identified by school counselors, typically those at risk of not graduating due to credit deficiencies, those whose home site doesn't offer a needed course or students who fall into a gray area where traditional models just don't fit. We provide rolling enrollment and online asynchronous courses along with optional one-on-one support. We also serve students who require schedule flexibility in order to graduate, including those needing treatments or hospital stays. Flex Credit students can pause their course or meet virtually and even carry the course across academic years if necessary. Examples of enrollments from this year, from my colleagues, 49 students from Beaverton High School, 36 from Community School and 78 from Flex Online School, all took part in the Flex Credit Program. As Flex Credit works with schools district-wide, we can combine students across sites to ensure all classes and content areas available for all students to compete, to complete with a BSD-certified teacher's support when and how they need it. Finally, Flex Credit supports schools directly, offering additional licensed instructors across BSD content areas, shareable courses for in-building credit recovery and supports like GED prep, Work Keys and Summer Advancement. In every scenario, we partner with schools to ensure no student falls through the cracks. At Flex Online School, we are the sole online and K-12 school in the district. We like to say if you ask 100 students why they chose Flex, you'll get 100 stories. Our mission is to provide a flexible learning option for families who need something different than the traditional school. This year, we've enrolled athletes, actors, students with responsibilities like work or family support, students with social, emotional or medical barriers to success and students who have activities or interests they cannot pursue with a traditional schedule. Like the others presenting, Flex is another option that provides students a voice in their educational path. The online format provides families flexible scheduling option. It also allows those who have challenges getting to school the ability from work, to work from wherever they are. We have a library space where students can come in whenever they need and they get adult support and they have a quiet place to work. Students can ride the base Beaverton Academy of Science and Engineering school bus because it serves the entire district to Flex or we can also provide TRIMET passes for high school students who need them. We offer open enrollment during the summer and second semester. Students new to the Beaverton School District can enroll anytime. We also serve several families from Portland Public through inter-district transfer. We have a couple of options I want to highlight from the school. Our classes can be taken asynchronously. We have students who work full-time or are daycare or other reasons why they can't attend during the day. We have a new program called HYPE, which stands for Hybrid Program Experience. And that's a small cohort of students who agree or commit to come in twice a week. And when they come in, we talk to them about some of the elephants in the room that are being barriers to their success. We have an SEL time and then they also have a chance to meet with other students and have those social experiences that help transition them maybe back to in-person. We also offer concurrent enrollments for students who cannot access the classes they need at their home school. This year, we had 36 students from middle and high school across the district taking a Flex course. And then finally, even though we are an online school, we offer field trips and events to build community and help students develop the skills to thrive in social situations.
Merlot Station Campus serves students K through 12 in the Beaverton School District. We work to get to know our students, leverage their strengths and support their needs in a smaller community. Community School is a ninth through 12th grade program, options program housed at Merlot Station Campus. We work to support students' academic behavior and social goals for students in a smaller class setting where students take four classes a day and earn credit each quarter, which supports them making incremental progress towards graduation. Additionally, we have five other programs onsite, Passages, which you'll hear about here shortly, Interim Home Instruction, which supports students who are unable to attend a full day of school. CTE Construction Magnet Program provides a construction CTE pre-apprenticeship for students in the Beaverton School District who are juniors and seniors. Our Continuing Education for Young Parents provides a full-day childcare program so students can attend either their home school or one of our programs on our campus. And Product Reset serves secondary students that might be facing an expulsion from their home high school or middle school. So to continue with our Passages Reengagement Program, our mission at Passages is threefold. We work to rebuild students' trust in education, connect them with a path for their future and help them build confidence in themselves. We serve students ages 16 to 21 who are experiencing multiple barriers to education. We offer flexibility, highly individualized instruction and positive relationships for our students. We do that through seven components, offering different levels of support and which change over time in response to student needs. Students looking to re-engage after an absence can begin again in interval. Older students who need to finish up a few credits can do that with a high degree of flexibility in Connect. OYCP graduates get a smooth transition back to the district through OYCP Transition. Students looking for an alternative to the diploma path can do so in our GED and GED and Espanol programs. Current seniors who have credit recovery needs can utilize Prograd to make it to the finish line this month. And College Track is an opportunity for our Merlot Station Campus students to begin taking college classes at PCC while still in high school. Our work is very heart-centered, balanced by strong systems and processes that are equitable for all students.
So briefly, we wanted to share our grad rate data over the last couple of years as a sort of a foundational piece because all of this work looks like a number on a page. But the student's story that you'll hear more about, as well as each of these programs that support our students, help us to achieve what is the third highest grad rate in the Portland metro area. Yes, we took a bit of a drop this last year, 1.3%, and our schools are looking into why that is. But we're proud of the work that our schools are doing, both comprehensively and also in alternative pathways to support student grad rates. You can also see our five-year cohort completion data has increased every year. And much of that is due to the person to my right there, Gretchen Mollers, who spends a great deal of time re-engaging our kids who oftentimes don't always want to stay in our system. But she's able to partner them and pair them with the programs that would work best. So we have some data to support how these programs are working to help all of our students.
So the table you see on the slide before you, each row represents a year. And so starting with the year 21, 22, the first number is the total number of graduates from the entire district. The second number is of those graduates, how many, you know, took part in the Flex Credit Program. The third column then is how many received a mark. So they completed something, received a mark. And then those last columns show the percentage of the graduates that were ever enrolled or who received a mark. What you can see is the number of students enrolled in the Flex Credit Program has increased pretty steadily. I, I sort of liken that to, these are pandemic students, right? So the pandemic hit and then they're sort of flowing through the system. You can also see as a percentage of overall, we've, the Flex Credit Program has impacted more of the graduates than ever. And again, I think part of that is, has to do with the effects of the pandemic.
Policy J E C A, Admission of Resident Students, was revised for the school year 2023 to 24. The revisions concern the age of enrollment of students. Previously, enrollment of students who do not receive sped services was limited to age 19. The policy was revised to extend the opportunity of enrollment to age 21. The rationale was to extend a free and appropriate public education for a longer period of time in the hopes that certain student groups would see a rise in graduation and completion rates, particularly our students who are English language learners and our newcomer students. The data on this slide suggests that the change to this policy has been of great benefit to our ELL and newcomer students. This year, we anticipate that 29 students ages 19 to 21 will earn their diploma and six will complete their GED. It's still me. Continuing with specifics of our district's retention and alternative education efforts, this slide shows general passages data for the last six years. You can see the effects of COVID-19 on our students served with a big dip during the 2020 to 21 school year and then building back to record levels. Last year, we served 710 students throughout our seven different components. The final column shows the total number of students who complete diploma requirements or earn their GED with us. The engagement efforts of our Passages Program are a major factor in our district's stellar four-year graduation rate and four- and five-year completion rates. Now, to bring us back to our student who started her senior year on track to graduate. She also started the year knowing she would be a new parent and returned to Passages OYCP Transition to finish her last credits due to the flexibility of the program. She also started Passages College Track and earned credit at PCC. Now a parent, she will graduate with a standard diploma next week. It would be wishful thinking to believe that her struggles are over now that she has a diploma, but we know that she has a solid foundation of skills along with a high school diploma and college credit, which will help her better weather the challenges she may encounter in her future.
So we've listed a number of resources for you to check out at your own leisure. And with that, our part of the presentation is over and we welcome any questions from the group.
Susan? So four out of the six people up there, I've had the pleasure of working with, with my own child. And children, I should say, because Jill was principal for my older one and my younger one. So my path is not too, my daughter's path is not too dissimilar from this young woman who's graduating this year, except that she did not get her GED, you know. But I'm gonna tell you this because she struggled a lot going to school, I think really starting in eighth grade. She had a lot of support from ISB and she got through that year. It was really hard. Ninth grade, I think we tried Charter Academy, whatever that was called, Connections Academy. We, I can't, I can't remember, we went through Flux, we went through. We tried, like I said, every single thing. Up here, we tried for my daughter. But what I am gonna say, and I know to this day, my daughter has a feeling of, well, I don't have my diploma and where am I? But I can tell you, my daughter's going to PCC. She's gonna get her associate's degree, she's working. I, I know she's got ambitions to go further, you know, further her education. Every kid is different in the school district. My kid is lucky, she's got resources from her parents so we can wrap around for her. There's a lot of our students that don't have the same supports that my child has had over the years, didn't make it easy. But she certainly had the support. What, but I'll tell you this, when she's taking classes, she's still taking her classes online at PCC. So I hope there's a way that as we're looking at classes, and I'm so thankful for Flex Online because I think it's, you know, a way for students like my daughter to go to school and feel successful and get that graduation degree. And at the time, Zoe was just a little bit too, too late for Flex On, Online, I think. But I just want to thank every single one of you. It's an honor to have been on the school board, watching this grow. And I am so excited to see where you're all at, where we are as a district. I know there's work, more work to be done to, to get kids who feel like they can't fit into a certain box, to get them to realize they can. There, you know, there's so many families out there that are afraid to go to school for, you know, they don't know what's gonna happen and so they are fearful. The fact that we have Flex Online makes it easier for our students to go to a school online and be, you know, not seen because they don't want to be seen. Again, thank you. And Beaverton High School, I love what you're doing. I wish all of our high schools had that opportunity to do the same thing that you're doing. So thank you so much. And again, I appreciate every single one of you for what you're doing for the students of our district. Thank you. Tammy?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, but first, a quick comment, the policy update, J E C A, so that we are serving more of our students than we should be serving. And I just want to acknowledge that that was championed by Chair Perez and so pleased to see the outcomes for these students. So really appreciate all the hard work, but also want to acknowledge the, the work done by this board, done by Chair Perez to bring that to fruition. So I really appreciate that. Quick, couple of questions for Dr. Sanchez. From your part of the presentation, you mentioned teen parents. Is there daycare available for, for these teen parents for their children?
Yes, our Continuing Education for Young Parents Program provides full-day childcare for those students and they can choose to attend their home high school or they can attend one of our programs on campus.
Excellent. And then the second question was, the CTE Construction Program is pulled out and separate and special in some way from our other CTE programs. Can you tell me a little bit more about why that one is a part of your portfolio rather than the other CTE programs?
Correct. So our CTE Construction Magnet Program is one that anyone in the district can apply to come to. So they'll provide busing. And it's a two-year program for juniors and seniors that really focuses on a...
So they'll provide busing and it's a two-year program for juniors and seniors that really focuses on a pre-apprenticeship in construction. So whereas many CTE programs may be housed at the school, homeschool and available to the students attending there, we are one in which students at any comprehensive school cannot come and attend. Thank you.
Sunita?
Thank you so much for this information. My question is about Flex Program. You have broken it between the credit recovery and the online regular program. It's, is it my, if, uh, just a clarification question, for K through 12, there is no summer program? Nothing for summertime?
Yeah, if you're asking about a summer online option, correct, correct. So the funding that we have currently only supports programs that happen in the school buildings?
And the credit recovery that we have has summer options there, but that has, those kids have to be, um, the counselor has to initiate that, right?
Yeah, so the, yeah, good question. So the, the, um, the students that are in Flex Credit are already attending one of our other comprehensive high schools. So they would attend their summer program at their home comprehensive high schools. The students that attend Flex Online School, because we become their school, we connect our counselors to those counselors and we push a list out for students that we recommend for summer school. And they would attend also in the boundary school where they live.
So, um, this is because I don't know about this program so much. I want, I have a question. There are a lot of kids who may want to learn a language and there is not enough kids to start a class. So Flex seems to be a good option for those kids to learn a language. Uh, how do you support that?
Yeah, so it really depends on the staffing. If we have enough staffing to support a course like that, then we, we do, we try to offer it. And similar to what the Flex Credit Program does, which is pool students, then we can also pool students. We have concurrently enrolled students right now that are taking AP Spanish because the AP Spanish is not available at their homeschool. So it really depends on the amount of staffing that we have and the demand.
And how is absenteeism, uh, this is a different question. How is absenteeism taken into consideration in your schools? Like when they are in a regular Flex Program? Because it's flexible, I just, is it the same rule that they have in a comprehensive schools or is it different?
Yeah, it's different. So we follow the ODE guidance. On the school side, we follow the ODE guidance, which requires some form of two-way interaction with the student each period, each day. Our elementary, our K through fives have, have live sessions throughout the day. And if they attend any of those live sessions, that counts as a daily attendance. But the other students have to take part. We follow the comprehensive high school schedule. And so they, either they attend because they can attend live or they do asynchronous work that shows that they're engaged in their coursework.
And this question is for all of you, like how do you get the parents and the community involved in these programs to support the students so that they can be successful in their journey?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. For us, we call the parents or guardians learning coaches because they're vital and crucial for success with our students. And we offer orientation sessions where we invite the folks in. We, so a, a big one at the beginning of that semester for new students. And then anytime we have a new enrollment, we invite the student and the family in together. And we walk them through the program so that they understand. And then we provide them supporting materials so that they know. But it really just takes a lot of contact and building relationship with the families.
Ugana and then Justice?
I, I wanted to respond to one of your questions about summer school with Flex Credit specifically. And the numbers you saw represent some summer school numbers with Flex Credit. So Flex Credit offers our intensive summer version, summer school, which is an asynchronous online opportunity for high school students. And this summer, we're offering personal finance, which is the new high school graduation requirement. So that's going to free up some space in student's schedule. Health, AGS 2 and accelerated AGS 3. So those numbers that you saw were about one in five of our high school students last year engaged in Flex Credit. Some of that is the ISV summer school program.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And I'm glad that our students have all these different alternatives to graduation. So the question I have is, is there an impact? Let's say our students follow one of these pathways. Does that inhibit them from attending a four-year college? Or do they have to, does it have a requirement for them to attend a community program before going to a four-year college? Does that impact them in any way from going to a four-year college upon graduation?
Generally, no. It could come down to the types of grades a student is getting on their transcript. That's more an indicator of like something that would hold someone back from going to a four-year university. But if they're earning a standard diploma and their GPA is high enough, a student from BHS or finishing with Passages or at community school or Flex Online, they all can go to four-year university. And since the GED was revamped in 2014, um, in the state of Oregon, if a student scores at least 170 or higher on all four of the subject area tests, that may qualify them for like first year student admission into the Oregon university system. So a GED doesn't even hold you back anymore from four-year college.
Justice and then Melissa?
Thank you for this report. My question is in regards to justice system involved youth. So youth that are either under, say, supervision or either whether that's Washington County, OYA. Do we have a, because I know they won't definitively just go to alternative programs if they have other, they may just return to their comprehensive school or, you know, they may have never been out of school all the way. But I just have a, just a general sense, do we have someone who is either the contact point or tracks that engagement to make sure those students are staying connected to school? Like, does that land in anyone's particular wheelhouse process wise?
I can handle this. Um, yes, we do. And we do have a system for students who are returning for an absence from wherever, whether that's a justice system or a hospitalization. And we do have a, a TOSA teacher on special assignment whose like main focus is working with, to, to make sure our students who are in the juvenile justice system are able to return in a very supported and friendly way. Back to whatever option, um, the, the team student involved, uh, things will be the best for them.
Melissa?
Thank you so much for the presentation. It really is a celebration of so much work. And I appreciated the term messy in this process because I feel like that's an ownership of the adults having the issue within the system. And it seems like everyone on your team is like, yeah, we need to fix that. And so thank you for managing the adult issues to be able to address the students' needs. And within a big system, that can be really tough and you're such great role models for us on how to better serve our students. So thank you. I did have a, a question about the 10-day drop, the 10-day drop referrals process. And, um, I know some of our students, attendance is a big thing, right? We keep talking about it. And, um, some of our students might miss for a variety of reasons, health concerns, so many, right? You said 100 different students, 100 different stories. So we could, there's so many. So if they're at a comprehensive high school and they miss the ninth day, if they are gone the 10th day, do they just lose access to everything and they just get dropped? Or, and then is, is there flexibility in that? And then if there isn't flex, if, I don't know. And then if families are struggling with that, navigating all of that, where do they go? How do they, how do they access help?
To answer the first part of your question, if a kid is 10-day drop, they do lose access at that point. I think our system is really working to try to catch kids before they get to that point. So we have, like I said, in our program, the Bark Program, we have a counselor who's doing proactive outreach, having options, planning meetings with students and families to figure out what might be the best next step. So there's a lot of different efforts that are going into it.
I can speak a little more to that. So generally, those students start off on a spreadsheet of like, here are the students who are at day four of an absence and then day seven of an absence and then day nine. So our attendance teams at our comprehensive high schools are tracking that. And we know that students can be, like you said, 10-day drop for various reasons, an extended vacation or medical, uh, medical needs. But for those students, and our counselors are so good at creating relationships with our students and our families. They're the first line of defense. And so they're really reaching out along with our social workers to our students and their families. Because if we're getting this much attendance, like lack of attendance, it's more than just an academic problem. This is something that it's really helpful to have social workers involved with. And so, once, as, once a comprehensive high school has exhausted all of their options, right? Educational options, meetings, meetings with the families, reaching out, phone calls, all of that. And they're still not making any traction, then they can refer that student to Passages re-engagement, knowing that we'll continue reaching out and doing engagement. And they can continue focusing on the students who are showing up and are enrolled.
As a follow-up, is there, I, I imagine there's some high school students who want to keep, wearing their orange Beaverton High School. So is there any way to stay engaged with the Canvas site? And still, like, is there an in-between world where they still get to stay at their comprehensive high school? Or is it, nope, once you hit that day nine, we're going to, once you hit that day 10, then you're over to Passages? Or, and I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't, I, um, because like you said, it's super messy and not all answers are probably, or not all questions are answered yet.
Yeah, I'll just start off with that, just seeing that the 10-day drop rule, that's state law, unfortunately. Yeah. But, um, yeah, and then Andrew?
Yeah, I, I think that the reason why we created the half-day Bark Program was to sort of have kids who really, really wanted to stay connected to their home high school, have a place. And so the, so that might look different for different students. And that might be a student who is not coming at 8:45 and leaving at 3:30 every day. It might be a kid who's coming to engage in a partial day because that's what they're able to do, to stay connected to their school and still earn credits. And so I think it is one of those, it depends kind of conversations.
Susan?
Just a really quick comment because again, that, those options to go kind of half-day to a school or, you know, to the comprehensive high school for my daughter wasn't there. So I'm just going to say and say, because huge strides in our district and I know there's a long way to go. I, I just hope that our students and our parents know exactly what the options are. I do know that the other part is when you hit that 10-day, because my daughter hit that 10-day a lot and during her high school period and even in eighth grade to some extent, that the students, there are students out there that, you know, feel shame and afraid. And then it makes it even harder to go to school. And so I'm also very happy to hear that we have social workers now in place and I hope that continues. Because I, I hope, and again, I know every family's different, every circumstance is different. But I hope that, that we as a district can continue to go this, this, to the, with this model. And those most at risk know that they're cared for in our district. So thank you very much.
Tammy?
Thank you. Um, Jill, you had a quick follow-up to Sunita's question about summer school. And you mentioned the, the financial literacy class that's new this year. Are, is there a cost to our students for these summer programs? And if cost is a barrier, they have ways around that. Thank you.
They are, um, there is a cost to the classes and we do offer waivers for families who express the, the need.
Well, it's exciting to me to see where we're at, like four years. I remember sitting and talking with Gretchen and Toshiko and trying to figure out, initially we started with, um, how do we get the new, our newcomer students that longer runway? And then I think, yeah, was it Jill? I don't remember. Somebody was like, um, oh, they were like, no, it has to be all students. You can't move fast. You need to slow down and do this right so that it's every student has that access to that longer runway and these options. And so it took two years to get the policy moving through. And so it's exciting to see. And then I, as I visited your, each of your programs and your buildings, it was great to see just the collaboration and the excitement of the students in the daycare and, and having the, the students going to see their children in, in between classes and in the classrooms, like the CTE program that you have. And, um, or, and how you were creating that space for the elementary school students and thinking about what's the next step? Can they come more often? We only have one room and how do we do this? And then, you know, um, at Beaverton, watching how they're having more and more, like, how do we track? So they don't have to take the whole course, but certain parts of the course that they have to redo. So you don't have to take Algebra 1 like six times or something, but you could take the section that you didn't pass. And then you get supports in there. So it's just exciting to see how these options are growing. And then also naming Christina back into the room and just the creativity on how do we continue to make this program the right program for each of our students that have 100 reasons to be there? So I just, a lot of appreciation. I'm proud of our district and I know that we're going to continue to grow. One question, I know we talked way back around, how are we catching the students between eighth and ninth grade? Or when they're in those transition points? And then how, like, because we were trying to figure out a system of like tracking them. So once they, we lose them and nobody's like, the counselor, I don't know where they went. Or nobody knows where they went, or we didn't even notice that they were gone. And so like, how are we working on that system or what are we doing now that, or where have we grown? Or where do we need to grow a little bit more?
Yeah, I think that's a, that, that's a million dollar question. And we, we do have systems in place, namely when counselors identify eighth graders coming into ninth grade through our 8.5 summer school program. We get kids who train, are really working on that transition, the academic skills, but more importantly, the social skills. The real question is, is how do we make sure that no one gets lost between that transition? It's one thing to identify a student, you know, they're going to that next ninth grade comprehensive school. What about the kid that we don't know, they, they don't enroll or they've lost enrollment? And our registrars, our counselors do a really good job of tracking those kids. If we don't get that enrollment paperwork to enroll them in another district, and then it's up to the buildings to make sure that we're tracking that and finding out where the kid is. And if they should be in school, then we marshal our resources to support, whether that's social worker, counselor, teacher, administrator, to get them enrolled into the comprehensives. Because there are so many supports at the ninth grade to really make sure that that's a soft landing for kids in order to achieve a success. And part of it's just making sure we're in strict partnership with our middle schools. Having the feeders we do make that a little more difficult because we don't have clean feeders. But that counselor-to-counselor interaction where they receive sort of a list of students coming, where we know we need to start the year with intensive interventions, supports those kids to be successful from day one.
Were you going to add something? I saw your finger on the, on the.
Just to maybe add a couple of things that are happening at the comprehensive high school. So we use an early warning system from when we get the roll over to our eighth graders. So we go intentionally down to the eighth grade and meet with the counselors and administrators and really walk through kids that we know might need additional supports at the high school level. So one of the things, we, we have team structure for ninth grade success. So one of the things that we're trying to do to create heterogeneous classes is really look at students and identify what needs they have and do some hand scheduling of students in ninth grade. And that's one of the things that we're really working on as we try to transition students up to the high school.
And one last question, or do you want to say something? Go ahead. Okay. One thing I've been thinking about is I know, like with Flex Online, there were some like procedures or limitations of when we have some creativity that we're trying to use and maybe it's a funding thing. And so I just, as we look at budgeting for next year and we know that our enrollments are going down in certain areas, I think it would be great to, um, to, to consider what is, it is that you all still need to support even more students to ensure. And somehow getting back to Todd or something so that we can hear as we're thinking of the budgeting process way ahead of time, as we're looking at the SAM model or as we're looking at those pieces, what is it that we need to do as a board to better support the budget in a way that supports your work with those glitches that we have in every system that we're just like, if we just could have blank, you know, or knowing that we don't have all the money in the world, but Mike is coughing over there. But don't choke. I'm just saying, like, just want to make sure that we're considering that as we're considering these other pieces in, in the work, but. Vita or? I don't know. I don't think there's an answer, but if you want to, I don't want to put anybody in the spot, but maybe collaborative. to put anybody in the spot, but maybe collaboratively come up with some things, or maybe.
Yeah, I, I just have two quick questions. One was Jill mentioned those five classes for the summer. Is that available for all the, all the kids, whoever wants to take it? Or is there a restriction, number restriction?
There, there is a cap restriction. Last week, I had a conversation with Christina Schultz, and they're going to lift the restriction and open some more sections of a few classes. There's the personal finance class, this is the first time that we're teaching it this summer, so I think they're going to stay at that cap. This is our, our pilot year of that class, to see how it goes, and.
How much is the cap? Oh, it's okay if you don't.
I don't know. But I can find out that for you and get back to you.
And how do you let the students and the parents know about these, that this is available for them to take?
Messages are sent out through Canvas, counselors know about it, and there's, do you want to talk?
Sure.
Okay.
A lot of those are word of mouth, because we started the program in 2014, so we've been doing it for many, many years. But also, we provide information in one-page flyers for the high schools, and then we have a website, and the families seem to find it.
Susan, if it's such an old program, what's your feedback? What, how have you found? Like, do a lot of students take it? Do they take the use of this during the summer? Because summer is coming, and parents usually wonder what, you know, what classes or where to send kids. This is a good resource that we have, it's nice to let more and more people. So what has your experience been, like, in the past years?
We've had a pretty steady growth in enrollment, almost every single year. It's a self-funded program, so some of the cap and decisions about are based on, do we have enough to support the salaries? If there's ever any excess funding, it always goes back to the district, and then it's distributed to ninth graders that are, need support. So we actually distribute it back to the comprehensive high schools, and they use it for their ninth graders that are at risk. But we just, we basically do what the, what capacity we can.
I just have one question, if there is time. There's time? Yeah. I remember in our school showcase, I was talking to you, and you were, you mentioned about, you know, prep classes, that we have licenses for students to take, like SAT prep, or, how does that work? How, if a kid wants to take that, what do they have to do? Can you walk that, walk us through that?
Yeah, we keep those, we house those in a Canvas course, and each one of those, it, it's effectively a digital library, so a student can go and check out any of the items that they want, which include SAT prep, ACT prep, math tutorials. And so we have a course, and then we provide a self-enroll code, and students can use that throughout the year, anytime they want. Correct, correct, yeah.
Because I hope more and more students will use it. Thank you.
Ugana?
Yeah, just thought of a question. I want to clarify, this, this pathway, is it a modified diploma pathway? And then my second question is, how does this program support your students with special needs on IEP 504? How does this program support them?
I can speak to Passages Reengagement. We support students regardless of the diploma type that they're on, if they're on a standard, modified, or extended. We've also worked with a student who is on the former Alternative Certificate. We have many students receiving support through special education and 504 plans.
Yeah, I would say similarly, at the comprehensive high school, we support students who are on all diploma paths. And at the high school, they also have their case manager that they're able to access and get support from. They're also working on targeted, specific recovery, and so there's a parent educator there, as well as a classroom teacher that can provide scaffolds.
Well, it looks like you have gotten our, all of our questions, so thank you so much for your work, and we will conclude the work session, and we'll begin the board business meeting at 7 o'clock. The June 2nd, 2025 work session of the Beaverton School Board is hereby adjourned at 6:40.